Good evening, and I'll bring this September 14th City Council Meeting to order. If you could please rise for the invocation by Pastor Karen Leadall from Christ the King Lutheran Church.
Let us pray. God of love, as we gather tonight, we are mindful of the thousands of innocent lives that were lost on an unforgettable morning fifteen years ago this week. We pray for all whose lives are touched by fear and grief, PTSD and depression, anger and animosity, anxiety and hopelessness. We call out to you for mercy in what has unfolded in the years since war and the loss of more life. Teach us to work for a world free from every kind of hatred, violence, and ignorance. We also remember the courage of the countless men and women who have and continue to put their lives at risk in order to rescue, alleviate suffering, and bring solace to the afflicted. Renew our commitment to do justice, love mercy, and walk humbly with you. May terrorism in all its forms disappear from the face of the earth. May your blessing light the way of your people that we may walk in safety. Give us your love to cast away the works of darkness and put on the garment of light. In this small part of your world called Sebastian, we pray for those who have been given power and authority as a trust in service for the sake of our mutual welfare, especially our mayor and city council. We pray as well for those in our community who are present, whether they have a general interest in what might promote our common life or are here for something of greater particularity. Grant a spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice as items on tonight's agenda are presented. And then give us, we pray, the grace to live together in unity and peace as a community that seeks to be a reflection of the Lord's vision of God's will being done here on earth as it is in heaven. It is in the name of your Son Jesus we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Mayor McPartlin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Here.
Ms. Coy.
Here.
Mr. Gilmore.
Here.
Mr. Hill.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, council, any agenda modifications? I just have one item that I want to add. Under the proclamation after school attendance, there's a Dr. Hamilton who's also receiving a proclamation for Constitution Week, and she wants to talk about Hunt for Hope. Any problem with that? No? All right. All right, Pastor Newhart and Sergeant Sales.
All right, the first proclamation we have is for National POW MIA Recognition Day, which is Friday, September 16th. I think we need not just a day, but every day, just keep them in mind. Whereas National Prisoner of War Missing in Action Recognition Day was proclaimed by an act of the United States Congress in 1998, and whereas National POW MIA Recognition Day is therefore observed by our citizens on the third Friday in September every year, this year falling on September 16th, and whereas according to the Defense POW MIA Accounting Agency, there are more than 83,000 Americans still unaccounted for from past conflicts, and whereas the Veterans Council of Indian River County, a local nonprofit established by volunteers to support and remember our local veterans, will now present a countywide rededication ceremony at 11:00 a.m. on September 16th at the Indian River Mall to honor our missing heroes. And now therefore I, Bob McPartlin, mayor on behalf of the City of Sebastian City Council, do hereby proclaim support of the Veterans Council of Indian River County and of our many veterans who are still prisoners of war or missing in action from current and past conflicts. The City of Sebastian hereby encourages all citizens to remember the fallen and the missing and to participate in this ceremony at the Indian River Mall at 11:00 a.m. on September 16th.
Thank you, sir. You're welcome. There you go. Thank you.
The ceremony will be held in front of the Victory Center Military Store, of which I am the president. It's 501 C-3, 100% volunteer staffed, 100% of profits go to veterans. First year we had me as president, we gave away $8,000. This year we gave away $15,000. I also do your toys for tossing Sebastian.
I do want to encourage you to be there. In Indian River County, there are 20 that were MIA, one in World War I. There were 10 in World War II, two in Korea, two in Vietnam, and one during the Cold War. Karen Egan will be speaking or be present at the MIA ceremony, POW MIA ceremony. James Eagan Jr., Lieutenant USMC, his patrol was ambushed in January of 1966. His remains have never been recovered. We look forward to seeing you there. We must remember that these men and women who have lost their lives or are MIA, they gave it for you, for your freedoms, that we may have those freedoms. So I encourage you to remember them, support them, come and visit, and visit the Victory Store. It is to support our veterans in this county, not any other county. And we really do support our veterans. Everything we do goes to them. Nothing goes to our council. It goes to them. So come and be a part of it. Remember it. It's an honor to stand next to an Army and a Marine veteran, as I'm an Air Force veteran. Happy birthday, Air Force, this Sunday, 18th September, 69 years.
Thank you. At least I know the president of this store now because for years I've been asking for explosive awareness disposal items in there. They have everything for the paratroopers and the special forces, but we seem to remain unknown, so I know who to badger.
I can get you some EOD coins.
That's outstanding. Thank you. All right, thank you, guys. All right, next we have a proclamation for Constitution Week. Dr. Hamilton? Is she in too? All right. All right, this is a proclamation for Constitution Week, September 17th through the 23rd.
Whereas September 17th marks the 229th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper accord to officially recognize this magnificent document, its memorable anniversary, and the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating the week in which September 17th falls as Constitution Week. Now therefore I, Bob McPartlin, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Sebastian, Florida, and on behalf of the Sebastian City Council, do hereby proclaim September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week in the City of Sebastian, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution held in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost knights may never be regained.
Thank you. I represent both the Treasure Coast Daughters of the American Revolution and the Treasure Coast Society Children of the American Revolution, and we'd like to thank the City of Sebastian for continuing to recognize Constitution Week every year for us. Thank you.
We've got Dolores Carf and Krista Girafewell. From the Treasure Coast Food Bank. Does a great job.
It's just me, Krista.
Just Jill? Okay. All right. Just Krista. She comes every year. Forgot my orange tie.
I know.
I know. But it's really, okay. This is a proclamation declaring Hunger Action Month in Sebastian, Florida, September 2016. Whereas hunger and poverty remain issues of grave concern in the United States, the state of Florida, the Treasure Coast, and the City of Sebastian, with 22,000 children and adults in Indian River County now categorized as food insecure, and whereas the City of Sebastian is committed to taking steps to raise awareness about the need to combat hunger in every part of our city and to provide additional resources that the citizens of Sebastian need, and whereas the City of Sebastian is committed to working with the Treasure Coast Food Bank and mobilizing people about the role and importance of food banks and other hunger relief organizations in addressing hunger and bringing attention to the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues, and whereas food banks and hunger relief organizations across the country, including the Treasure Coast Food Bank, coordinated Hunger Action Day on September 8th, and will continue to host numerous events throughout the month of September to shed light on this important issue and encourage involvement in efforts to end hunger in their local community. Now therefore I, Bob McPartlin, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Sebastian, and on behalf of the Sebastian City Council, do hereby proclaim September as Hunger Action Month in Sebastian and call this observance to the attention of our citizens.
Thank you, Mayor McPartlin and the entire council. You've been doing this for us for a number of years. Hunger Action Month is every September, and it's to help us spread more awareness about the reality of food insecurity in our community. In Indian River County, we have about 22,000 people that don't know where their next meal is coming from. We partner with a lot of different organizations in Indian River County and in Sebastian in order to make a difference in their lives so that they don't have to worry about where they're getting their next meal. We have a particularly strong relationship with the school district, and we have programs in, I believe, all of the schools here in Sebastian, and they do a wonderful job providing food through the schools, through school pantry programs and our backpack program. They also have a teen pantry program now at the high school where kids can come in and get things like shampoo and conditioner and deodorant and things you might not think about, but obviously, you know, if a family is struggling to pay for food, they're struggling to pay for those other things too. And a lot of times the kids don't want to ask their parents when they know they can't afford it. So I know that Mayor McPartlin also is very involved in some of our other programs through the food bank, so I want to thank him as well. And anytime you guys have a chance to go to our website, stophunger.org, and see some of the events we have going on for the rest of the month, or come out and volunteer in our warehouse, we would love to have you there to give you an idea of the scope of what we're doing and allow you to join us a little bit. A little bit of your time goes a long way in helping us help people in need, so I want to invite all of you personally, and we'd love to see you come out and give you a tour and help you be a part of what we're doing. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I mean, if you'd ever had a chance to go down and see the warehouse in Fort Pierce, it's quite a sight to see. It's huge, and the amount of generosity that people have, and they're always looking for volunteers to help sort the food, as well as they come up to Felsmer once a month now with their truck and distributing food, and Felsmer is always looking for additional volunteers to kind of help with the traffic of getting through, as well as the one you didn't mention that is one of my favorite, is they also partner with nonprofits with their diaper pantry. And that's very helpful because, you know, they are able to give it to nonprofits, a carton of diapers for $1.80 as opposed to the $35 that they go for at Sam's Club, and that also helps assist the family to be more food secure because they have more additional money to spend. Thank you. How we doing, Shirley? You all good? I'm good? All right, all right. Me and Shirley work on the Pelican Island Community School project with the chief back there, so Shirley does a lot of coordinating and trying to raise awareness. This proclamation is designating the month of September as Attendance Awareness Month. Whereas chronic absences, missing 10% or more of school for any reason, including excused and unexcused absences of just two or three days a month is a proven predictor of academic trouble and dropout rates. And whereas improving attendance and reducing chronic absences takes commitment, collaboration, and tailored approaches to particular challenges and strengths in each community, and whereas chronic absence predicts lower third grade reading proficiency, course failure, and eventual dropout, and it weakens our communities and our local economy, and whereas schools and community partners can reach out more frequently to absent students to determine why they are missing school and what would help them attend more regularly, and whereas chronic absences can be significantly reduced when schools, parents, and communities work together to monitor and promote good attendance and address hurdles that keep children from getting to school. Now therefore I, Bob McPartlin, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Sebastian, and on behalf of the Sebastian City Council, do hereby proclaim that our city will stand with the nation in recognizing September as Attendance Awareness Month and commit to focusing on reducing chronic absenteeism to give all children an equitable opportunity to learn, grow, and thrive academically, emotionally, and socially.
Thank you. On behalf of the school district of Indian River County, we would like to thank the City of Sebastian for acknowledging the importance of attendance and also recognizing the connection between school attendance and academic achievement. I mean, it really is everybody's responsibility in helping children succeed and making sure they have, they're able to get to school and not have so many absences. So thank you very much.
And then Dr. Hamilton, want to come up and talk about your Hunt for Hope? Gives me a good segue to exit, right? So, all right. Thank you.
As you heard, my name is Holly Hamilton, and I, this is the fourth year I've run the Hunt for Hope Florida. I started it to raise money for inflammatory breast cancer, which is a severely underfunded form of breast cancer, but the most aggressive. It is considered rare, but unfortunately, they don't even have an ICD code for it, so I don't know how they really know how many people are diagnosed with it. I work with the IBC Network, and they're a completely volunteer board of people, and 100% of what we raise on the Hunt for Hopes across the nation do go to a grant that's already set aside for the year, every year. We started, she started with the first grant of $32,000, and she's got Terry Arnold, who is the president of the board, works tirelessly and is a survivor, and she has got it up to, I think she's at 680,000 in about six or seven years. So it's growing, awareness is growing. The biggest thing is education of doctors, of women, of men, of everyone about the cancer itself, and learning to diagnose it as early as possible because it counts on the survival rate. It has the lowest survival rate of all the breast cancers, and it's very aggressive because it's inflammatory and there's no lump. So I hope you'll come out and support our cause. We're doing a family-friendly scavenger hunt in the park in Sebastian on October 1st. We have a Facebook page at Hunt for Hope Florida and an event page that has all the information. It'll be in the afternoon from 1:00 to 6:00 on Saturday, October 1st, and 100% of everything we raise does go to the grant that's already set aside. So even if you don't want to come hunt, come out and support us towards the end. We're going to have giveaways. We support all the local businesses, and our stop's on our scavenger hunt, and we have lots of giveaways that they've donated to our cause. So I hope you guys will consider coming out and supporting us this year. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have Waste Management Recycling and Subscription Service update.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'd like to first quickly introduce my colleagues who are joining me here, right here to my right. Of course, you all know Bob Delacruz, our senior operations specialist, operations manager at Vero Holling, and Casey Godwin is our new district manager for Vero Holling, and Wendell Morse is our new contract compliance specialist that is also joining us at Vero Holling. So again, thank you very much for your time this evening. Again, I'm Dina Ryder Hicks, and pleased to be here with you tonight. I'm the Public Affairs Manager for Waste Management. Tonight, I'm going to offer a very brief presentation that's going to focus on three key areas. The increase in residential single-stream recycling since we instituted the cart program last year, an update on our commercial recycling promotional campaign that we instituted here in Sebastian, and growth in Sebastian in residential subscription service, which is giving rise to the need for an increased level of service within the city. First off, single-stream recycling. These two, next two slides here, these are from Indian River County, and it represents the trend that we're seeing within our single-stream recycling program. The orange line represents tonnages from FY 1415 under the old dual-stream bin system, the 18-gallon bins that we used to have. The blue line represents our new cart system of single-stream recycling, and we're pleased to see that spike in December of 2015. That means that wrapping paper and cardboard toy boxes and all those types of things are indeed being recycled. So that is certainly good news over the holiday season. January, February, relatively flat, which is what we would expect to see, and then again, another spike there in March. That can generally be attributed to a couple of things. March is a larger month, plus it's a time, too, we typically see a lot of spring cleaning going on, a lot of garage cleanouts, so some of these plastics and cardboard and other things that are collected around the house throughout the wintertime tend to be discarded, what we see over the, over the spring months. This slide represents what we've seen specifically for the last quarter. April and May, pretty consistent about what we would expect to see with recycling tonnages and the increase that we see there. The drop that we see in June, that probably is attributed to seasonal residents that depart sometime in May or June, so we are seeing those trends now, now focusing back upwards as we head into the winter months now. So very good news all around for what we're seeing since we've instituted the single-stream carted system, that those recycling tonnages are indeed increasing, and we continue our educational efforts to make sure that the right materials, the correct materials, are indeed going into that single-stream cart. On the commercial side, with regard to our commercial recycling campaign that we instituted here in Sebastian, just to give you a brief refresher of how the program worked, we did see a good amount of interest in it. We instituted this program at the beginning of the summer where a two- or four-yard dumpster recycling program would be available to commercial businesses within the City of Sebastian of itself. The first three months of recycling service would be free once the business signed up, and a very competitive rate thereafter with as little as it being $10 a month. The promotion enrollment period lasted through August 31st, and we currently have 21 commercial customers enrolled in the campaign, which is fair. It's a 35% increase in participation from where we were before we instituted this campaign. We're continuing to work with those businesses now to take a look at what is happening with their waste streams. We'll do this over the next several months to identify any potential cost savings that might be available for commercial customers. As the recycling tonnages increase and the amount of recyclables that are going into the recycling container increases, we're hoping that what could happen is either their size of their container or the frequency of collection on the garbage side will go down, so they can take those savings that they're seeing on the garbage side and realize that into the recycling program. On the residential side, we've seen a tremendous increase in residential curbside garbage subscription service since we began the new carted service here in Sebastian in October of 2013. Indian River County data reports that there are 10,890 residential single-family units within the City of Sebastian. In the summer of 2013, right before we went to the carted service program, we had approximately 4,500 curbside subscribers. In that time, since this summer, we are now up to well over 7,500 subscribers, an increase of more than 68%. So we are well on our way to almost full participation. We're going to repeat this exercise in the wintertime to see what effect that seasonal residents may have on that number, on that 7,583 number. We suspect that we'll probably see an increase, too, in the number of subscribers as those seasonal residents begin to return here in November and December. So again, we're going to take a look at these numbers again, probably in December-January timeframe, to see what impact those seasonal residents are having as well. So this increase in subscribers is certainly very good news all around for both Waste Management and for the city, but it's also, you know, put a strain on the resources that we have available, particularly when it comes to yard waste. A 68% increase in subscribers has led to the need for an enhanced level of service. Right now, we collect yard waste in the city on one day. That's just not enough anymore. With this increase in subscribers, we really need to spread this out, and that's what we're here tonight to discuss. So Bob's going to take over on the operations side to kind of explain to you what we're doing now and what we're proposing that we happen here going forward. So Bob?
Good evening. For the record, Bob Delacruz, Waste Management Operations Manager. Thank you very much for inviting us to come and speak about the service and to explain the levels of service that we are today. Once again, the City of Sebastian, just love it. Sebastian again, setting the trend in many different directions, and one of the areas that they did that I really love is the area of the waste removal. Like Dina was saying, we've grown dramatically. We went from approximately 4,500 customers to 7,500, so now it's time to take a look at the yard waste area. As I drive through the routes and I do observations on my drivers and the teams out there working, one of the areas that we're straining is yard waste. So what we did, we put together a plan to enhance the service, and the plan is to go ahead and provide service every day to the City of Sebastian in a designated area for yard waste. That'd do one of two things. It's either going to fall on a day the resident, that either they put out their yard, I mean their garbage, or they're recycling, and the yard waste could possibly fall on a day. So it'll be a one-day service for those items, either on a Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday. The other thing it's going to do, it's going to add additional time to the route trucks to make the route smaller and let the drivers do the proper job they should be doing. Give them more time, we're spreading out the service a little more, and the service will be Monday through Friday. And as you could see, excuse me, on the map, it's identified by color. The green area will be Monday, much smaller than what we do now, because we were doing Monday and Tuesday, route much smaller. The other area, the tan area, will be Tuesday. The burgundy or lavender area would be Wednesday, and then Thursday, and then Friday will be the blue, so on and so as. The areas are much smaller than what we do now, but like I said, it would give the men time to clean up, do what they need to do, put the cans back properly, and if we do continue to grow, we'll be able to absorb the new customers. Does anyone have any questions?
You missed me today. You missed me today.
Okay.
I'm in the green.
They might still be out there.
They are. They are still out there.
They might still be out there. Remember, it's a double pickup, but they had a lot of issues there, you know, the yard waste is out there. It's been very windy the past week, so they're probably still out there. If not, they'll recover you first thing in the morning.
You guys do a great job.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Will I get a notice what day I'm on?
Yes.
Or a sticker that I can slap on my thing?
Absolutely. What we're going to do, the areas that we went ahead and we pinpointed, we're going to go ahead and break out those addresses and do a mailer to each and every resident in that area. And then the map will be available for your government channel, and if we have to, we'll take a look at that, doing some sort of advertising through the local paper.
All right. That sounds good.
Problems arise when it's been on Monday after a holiday, and it's, you're still having a Monday date, so there are going to be some, those people who are in the Monday zone, it's going to back up again. I mean, is there any way to, I was going to discuss this with you tonight because this past two weeks with another holiday, a lot of people get confused, to include me. Sometimes you used to call, you had the robo-calls. I did not get one of those this time. One time I got a robo-call and it was not correct, but, you know, that's, so there's confusion when it's a holiday, what day do you come and pick up? The guys are still out there, just pass them. They're not going to get done before dark tonight because of the holiday last week. They're, I'd be very surprised if they finish the route. I'd, I'd be very surprised if they finish the route. So, how can, do you think this is gonna help? Or it, it's still gonna have a Monday backup for people who are scheduled on Monday?
Yeah, that's correct. The Monday scheduling, unfortunately, we have certain holidays that fall on a Monday. So, what we're doing now, when a holiday falls on a Monday per the contract, we, we make, the makeup scheduled day is Wednesday for the holiday, for the, for the garbage, for the solid waste. So, no one gets any service during the week in the city of Sebastian of a Monday holiday week. So, what this is gonna do, it's just gonna take a small area and it's gonna not give service on that Monday. But the rest of the, the rest of the city will get their normal yard waste service on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
Wait, I was talking yard debris.
We're only talking yard debris.
Yeah, we're talking yard debris, yes.
Okay. Because, so, and then, all right, so what's gonna happen with the regular service? Is that gonna be the regular garbage service for Mondays? What is the norm for that so that we can get used to this?
If, if you're not serviced on Monday for your regular service, it's go, well, per the contract now, it's, it's be serviced on Wednesday.
Yeah, that was kinda, and then, they come again the next day on Thursday.
Yeah, they come the following day.
That wasn't really good thinking, I don't, I don't know.
Originally, when we did that, we wondered about that. But the initial council and the mayor had took a look at it and they wanted to get the trash off the street. That's why they moved it up to a Wednesday.
Now, we have two trash days in a row by contract.
In a row, correct, yes.
And, and, so, and the yard debris collects. Okay, well, it looks like you've got a plan. Let's, let's see how this, this plays out. I, I'm glad we're addressing it because it's become a bit of an issue. So, if, if they don't get done tonight, what's gonna happen? Can we leave our stuff up? Can you promise that we'll, we'll leave it out there?
Yes. They'll be back first thing in the morning with, for the first few hours of service. And they would get that. We even dropped additional vehicles in. But being with the windstorms we have the last couple of weeks, it created a lot of palm branches and so on and so as.
And I, I wanna thank you very, very much because you, your, your folks go above and beyond. We're not doing a good job. Some people are not doing a good job. Most people follow the rules and understand how to bundle and, and what can go in, the yard debris. We still have a significant number of people, though, who just think we can pile it out there and expect your folks to go pick it up. Or theft of services and pile it on a neighbor's yard who has service. Boy, is that, that's a big one for me. I, I don't like to see people steal. And that's, that's stealing. So, if you're doing that and you get caught, I consider it stealing. I, I think Waste Management treats you very nicely. But it's theft. It's theft of services. When you, when you use somebody else's, that's like taking somebody's cable or somebody's telephone. So, we need to do a better job of getting people to bundle and not have the expectation that that huge pile is gonna disappear the next morning. And oh, by the way, please don't pile them on the sidewalk. We've got people who pile it on our sidewalks and leave it there for weeks. Your, your folks are not obligated to pick it up because it's not a legitimate bundle. So, we can do better as citizens. And, and thank you for rescheduling, for relooking at the yard waste.
You're welcome. If they can bundle it and get it a little more orderly, we can handle it for them. But, you know, it's a partnership. They would have to get it to where we'd be able to handle it. We can move more product for them also, so.
Well, I'm glad, those numbers are great. That, that's better than I hoped for.
Yes. My, my question, and again, I think you guys do a great job, obviously. But my question is about recycling. And would this be appropriate to discuss at this time or is your presentation complete?
Certainly.
I was listening on the radio this morning to Commissioner Solari discussing the mandate that the state has placed on Indian River County and all counties for that matter to reach 70%?
Seventy-five percent.
Or is it 75% recycling by the year 2020? Currently, I think the county's somewhere around 33?
Thirty-seven percent.
Thirty-seven. All right, that's pretty good. Thirty-seven percent is, is pretty good. But the mandate of 75% isn't even close. And, and it seems like we're doing things a little bit backwards here. If we're mandated to recycle 75% of our waste and we're picking up 66% of the times in a waste container and only 33% of the times in a recycled container. So, I think that we're gonna need to discuss that going forward. If we're, if we're expecting over 50% of the waste be recycled by our citizens and we're picking up the trash can twice a week and, and the recycle bin only once a week, that seems a bit backwards. So, I think going forward, we're gonna have to figure out something there and maybe do more recycling and less waste pickup to sort of motivate people to, to start recycling. Because you can really recycle a heck of a lot of the trash in those bins. And I've found my, my recycle bin is full and you're not coming for another couple of days. So, I think that council needs to have discussions going forward, you know, that it's our responsibility, as much as the county's, to meet that mandate of 70%. And if we're not looking toward that in 2020, which is really three years from now, then we're never gonna come close to that mandate.
You, you are so right about that, too. And if you look at the people as, as you're driving around the city on, on waste day, days, plural, occasionally, you will see some buckets that are overflowing or have the, they think you're gonna pick it up. And by the way, you do, maybe, maybe, maybe we shouldn't be doing that, the extra bucket that they've got out there. If you look at what's overflowing and what's in those extra buckets, a lot of it's recycling. It's because they are not recycling. And each and every person who is called to complain that their garbage pail isn't big enough, that I have gone to see, are not recycling. Well, if you recycle, you, and it's our mandate.
It's, it's not, I'm not interested in being like the recycle police and going through people's trash and making sure they're recycling. But if we're not making it convenient to do what we're supposed to be doing, then we're backwards. So, we're, we're not making it convenient to do the 70% or 75%. In fact, we're making it very, very difficult to do by providing two trash pickups and only one recycling. So, I'm just saying we need to be open as a council to, and understand that within the next three years, we're gonna have to do a heck of a lot better in order to, to help the county reach the mandate that's been set by the state.
Is there a way to separate Sebastian from, from the county stats?
There is. We are actually working on a software package that is a Waste Management product right now with the county. It's in beta testing right now. But we can actually separate the recycling out by route. So, we'll be able to actually see by route and, and pinpoint most of the city of Sebastian, just the corporate city limits of Sebastian, of what those recycling numbers are, once that software is up and running. We should probably have it up and running here in the next several months.
I, I would just, I'm curious to see how we compare to, say, Vero Beach and, and the county. Because actually, I'm, I'm so proud that we have increased subscriptions and, and it looks very nice and orderly now with the green and the blue buckets. Things have definitely improved, but we can do better. We can do better.
Well, I guess the thing is, it doesn't really matter. It's the county's landfill. What I look at is, when the landfill is full, we gotta get a new landfill. That costs a whole heck of a lot of money. So, some of the information I would like to see is, you talked about the tonnage, which gone up substantial in recyclable, and you increased subscription. Where is the tonnage in the garbage? Has that gone up or has that minimized because hopefully people are recycling more and that extends the life of the landfill? So, if you find that information, just send it to me in the future. And I guess just public awareness is, when you recycle, you gotta take the caps off when you put it in. If you put the cap on and you put it in, it messes up the machine. And then, it doesn't work as well, not as recyclable. So, you have to take the caps off, all your stuff. A lot of people don't know that.
Bob, we have designated vehicles and routes that do the city of Sebastian. So, it wouldn't be very difficult to get that tonnage put together.
Okay. All right. But you guys do a wonderful job. And Bob, as always, you are always responsive to any complaints that are out there.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
All right, we have one type on the brief announcement, but we'll just change it around. Monday was a great celebration down there for Patriot Day. So, just mark your calendar. The 16th anniversary of Patriot Day will be Monday, 9/11/2017 at Riverview Park. Any other brief announcements, council?
Yes. Thursday, September 22nd, we have a VIP coming through town. His name is Colonel Gary West. He's riding his bicycle from Maine to Key West to raise money for Folds of Honor, a scholarship fund that's given to daughters and sons of military members who have been killed or severely disabled in action. So, it's, it's a legitimate 501(c)(3), very, very, it's been around a long time. So, anyway, Colonel, the West is coming through Sebastian on Thursday, the 22nd. We are going to meet him at the county line and escort him to Riverview Park. He will be at the county line at 4:00. The American Legion Riders will be escorting him down with some police and sheriff escort down to the park. We're asking the business owners and, and any residents who want to come out to please wave to the Colonel as he drives by down US-1. Let's get some flags out there. Let's show patriotism. And there is a flag raising ceremony in the park. Colonel West's goal is to raise $60,000 in the 60 days that he is riding from Maine to Key West. He arrives in Key West on October 1st, his 60th birthday. We have our local Woody's Barbecue, the, the Burt's. Mr. and Mrs. Burt are putting the group up overnight and paying for their food. There's a six-member crew that comes with them. So, since he's staying here, I have volunteered to be the fundraiser coordinator for Sebastian. So, if any of you would like to donate or you have, belong to 501(c)(3)'s, call me. Call me at home. I will drive over and be glad to pick up a check made out to Folds of Honor. And we hope to see you all down at the park for just a real quick flag raising ceremony or waving your little 4th of July leftover flag out on US-1. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other brief announcements?
Mayor, I'd like to have us pull item number G from Consent Agenda, please.
Are we have to consent?
We will be.
We are now. There we go. Anyone else have anything? All right, we're on the consent agenda. Make a motion to...
Mr. Mayor, actually, I'd like to pull item... I'm sorry about that. Item I.
I?
Yes, sir.
All right. Anyone else? Last call. All right.
Move approval of item A through F, H, and J through M.
Second. Ms. Williams, roll call, please.
Ms. Coy.
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mayor McPartlin.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, item 7G, Mr. Gilmore, you pulled approve the extension of Applied Aquatic Management Agreement?
Yes. I have an issue with this. It's a piggyback agreement for Applied Aquatic Management that would extend our contract for five years to 2021. And I think that we have some concerns that private citizens have with, with the spraying of the glyphosate. And as I look through this, the state contract, it says, it's on page 111 of 285, Public Records. This is their contract, says, "This contract may be unilaterally canceled by the commission for refusal of the contractor to allow public access to all documents, papers, letters, and other material subject to the provision of Chapter 119 Florida statutes and made or received by the contractor in conjunction with this contract unless exemption for such records is allowable under Florida law," which I don't believe it is. And I believe that we have some, some issues with trying to get information from this contractor by private citizens. And I, I think that we really need to study this before we give them a five-year contract. I'm not in favor of this.
Mr. Griffin is shaking his head as far as the contract is availability to anybody. Yes, Mr. Griffin?
I'm unaware that they've made it, that anyone's made a public records request to the contractor. I don't know that that's taken place.
Have we made a request to the contractor for items that have been requested from us and have the contractor given us the information we've asked for? Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and information was requested at this forum several times. And that, all that information was passed on to the individuals who had requested information. So, I know of no refusal to provide information and no violations of statute. I, I don't underst...
All right. Well, the issue, the issue that I have with it is, if you, if you, just, all you have to do is Google it. This is from Scientific American. It talks about how, how dangerous this stuff can be.
There's none of that in what we're spraying.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, but you're wrong.
Have you read the labels?
If it...
I've read the la, I've been involved in this. Have you, have you looked at what they're spraying?
Let me, let me just read this. "New findings, new findings intensify debate about so-called cold inerts. The solvents, preservatives, surfactants, and other substances that our manufacturers add to pesticides. Nearly 4,000 inert ingredients are approved for use by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. Glyphosate, Roundup's active ingredient, is the most widely used herbicide. And glyphosate is what is used in that stuff that's sprayed."
No, it's not. I'm sorry.
Yes, it is.
I beg to differ.
We've gone around and around on this. It's not the same Roundup. Mr. Griffin, you wanna jump in on this?
No, it's not the same. If you call it Roundup, it's...
It's, it's, Mr. Gilmore, we've discussed this several times here.
And, and you're in error. I'm sorry, but you're in error.
It is not the same product. And, and, and now...
Well, let me, let me finish.
Now, we're in the business...
I have the floor. Let me finish.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Gilmore.
Sure.
Until now, most health studies have focused on the safety of glyphosate rather than the mixture of ingredients found in Roundup. But in the new study, scientists found that Roundup inert, inert ingredients amplify the toxic effect on human cells, even at concentrations much more diluted than those used on farms and lawns. One specific inert ingredient, polyethylene oxated tallowine, or PoE, was more deadly to human embryonic placental and umbilical cord cells than the herbicide itself, a finding researchers call astonishing. Now, the other thing is that there's new studies and new scientific evidence that this stuff that is sprayed, the herbicide, actually is linked to algae blooms. We know what, what caused, you know, not, we know the problems that we're facing with algae blooms. I'm just saying that I think that we don't need to be using this stuff. There's other ways. We have folks here in the town who have offered to come up with some other alternatives. And quite frankly, we have just not turned a deaf ear to them. And I, I just can't support this. I think, you know, a five-year contract is just insane.
Mr. Mayor?
All right, yes, sir.
I would quite frankly suggest that if you Google something, you can find any answer you want on the internet because the internet doesn't necessarily answer your, your question correctly unless you, you want it to. I would also suggest that the contract is, is a piggyback to the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, who has signed a, the same type of agreement with this business. It doesn't discuss Roundup or herbicides or anything in there. It discusses the application of, it doesn't discuss the actual product. So, what we're talking about today is something completely different than what the hysteria is bringing up. And, and so, let's just try to stay focused on, on what we're supposed to be doing here, and that is to either approve or disapprove the contract with this vendor, who, who is, who has the same contract with the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission. Our plan that we have in place is approved by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. Everything is in line the way it's supposed to be, environmentally sound, safe, and we are doing our jobs and due diligence by going through the process that we're going through.
And just to add, I've done a fair amount of research and Googling on this issue myself. I've been in the airboat behi, in, in a boat behind the airboat as it was spraying. So, I'm, got a little more than average knowledge on this. There is no glyphosate in this. It's Roundup Custom. Monsanto, the chemical company who makes this, in their infinite bad wisdom, chose to use the word Roundup. to use the word Roundup and then put custom next to it. It's different than Roundup. The glyphos, that Roundup custom is made specially for aquatic use to not kill. So when we say that the stuff we're putting in there contains glyphosate, that's a disservice because it's not true. We have gone over this. You can wave all you want, sir. We have gone over and over and over this. Roundup Custom is not glyphosate. It's different. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Mayor?
Did they get a motion in there?
Can I ask a quick question before we... Just a question of Mr. Griffin. As far as the product that the, this company is using, have we verified that it actually meets the state's requirements?
Have I personally done that?
You, your staff, whoever.
I mean, I have not pers, we don't have a biologist or a chemist on staff, no, sir. I mean, I haven't looked at the label myself. Frankly, I'm relying on DEP, Florida DEP, and the Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission and their biologists and chemists doing that. So that's, that's kind of what a piggyback does. That's why, that's why we do these things. We're, by trying to piggyback these contracts, we're able to tap into their expertise of the bidding process and the, and the, investigating this. And they've been doing this for a long time. We are mandated by St. John's to be doing this. So I, I think these folks who are, who voice objections to this, the folks in the audience, they've, they've been heard by our Natural Resource Board, they've been heard by the Indian River Lagoon Council, the NRB, or the council has not come to me with any kind of recommendation. So I'm recommending that we proceed.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. That's, that's what I wanted to, to find out, if, you know, we're piggybacking off this, if the people, like you said, the DEP, they have done their, their research, and if they say, you know, that it's good, and we're trusting them to, to say that it is what it's supposed to be. That's all I really wanted to find out.
Right. We're piggybacking off a reputable contract. If we didn't think that they were doing what they should be doing, then why do we need to have somebody testing that to make sure they're doing it? We would just do it ourselves. And it's much more cheaper for them to do it and efficient. So I make a motion to approve the extension of the Applied Aquatic Management Agreement until September 5th, 2021.
Second?
No public input.
Sir, we're getting to that point. If you got a call out, or if you can't follow the rules that are on the back of the form, you can come on right up, announce your name, direct all your comments to me, and we'll give you a few minutes, as long as you stay on track. And again, this is a thing that I think you have brought before us, and it's been discussed at council meetings at least four times in the last six months. So state your name and where you live, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bob Steven, 150 Concha Drive here in Sebastian. And Mr. City Manager, it was your, your request saying that we couldn't talk to...
Sir, 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 again, look at me.
The city manager requested that we couldn't talk to Applied Aquatics, and we did have a good relationship with it. They are a good company to deal with. And unfortunately, our, our scientist reporter is on vacation, and he's not here, and he did ask for, that's Mr. Cox, asked for you to give it for a couple of months so we can put all the paperwork together. We have almost everything together. Have six alternatives to using this poison. This is a poison. I live on this canal. When I came back from New Hampshire a week ago, my neighbors all came running to me and said, "Bob, they haven't been spraying, they haven't been spraying." "Oh, oh, green everywhere." Two days later, Applied Aquatics shows up with two boats, not one, two boats. Fire hose pressures are edge-of-my-waterways. The stuff is a puke-green-yellow right now. A guy comes up to me last week from the Indian River Lagoon Council and says, "Bob, Bob, scientific proof, glyphosate is directly related to the algae blooms." I goes home. The next morning, I goes out. Lagoon is all full of algae blooms right after Applied Aquatics. This is bad stuff. And this is not, we need to do some more investigations for the sake of the people in this town and the health and well-being. Let alone, I go out to that lagoon now, the turtles are gone, the frogs are gone, it stinks of death, the birds are gone. This is bad stuff, Your Honor. Please, give this a chance. Look into this. Look at Italy. Italy finally outlawed this stuff, almost every single place that humans are, especially the elderly and the children. Not good stuff. We can prove it to you. Please, give us a chance. Mr. Cox will be back from vacation. Give us a chance. I can get the IRL involved in it if you want. This is very, very important, and there are plenty of good ways of dealing with this. Enough said. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your passion, and nobody's stopping you from going forward to research and bring something back to us in the future.
And here's the interesting part. I don't disagree with a thing that he has said, because glycos, glyco-phosphate, or glycosophate, or the glyco business that is found in Roundup that you buy in the store is horrible, absolutely horrible. It is not in the stuff we're putting, that we're spraying. If it was, I would agree with you, but we are spreading misinformation when you're telling people that we're spraying that poison. We are not. Glyco-phosphate, that's...
All right. Any, any, all right. Anyone, anyone else from the public wish to speak on this Applied Aquatic Management Agreement? Seeing none? Any further council discussion? All right, roll call, Ms. Williams.
Mr. Gilmore.
No.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mayor McPartlin.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams.
No.
Ms. Coy.
Yes.
All right. Motion carries.
Three to two, motion carries.
Bring us up to item 7I, approve the Florida League of Cities Legislative Policy Committee travel, Mr. Hill?
Yeah, just a, are any council members planning on going? So I don't...
Did anybody sign up for any of these?
So I don't think it's, I don't think it's really relevant.
Okay.
Any other discussion on that?
Well, then, then I, we don't have any extra, for budgeting purposes, we don't need to, any travel, any extra travel. Is that correct?
I don't, well, we're not approving it, so I don't think that, if we, if we don't take action on it, then it's not approved. So I don't think there's any action necessary.
Okay, so move to dismiss it.
Withdraw.
Withdraw.
Second.
All right. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this side? Any further council discussion? Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Mayor McPartlin.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes.
Ms. Coy.
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. It's a strut of consent agenda. Bring us up to item 8, committee reports. Anybody have any reports to talk about? No? You want to talk about the MPO this morning?
Um, I'll, I'll do the All-Aboard Florida, and, well, do you want me to do the Go Line? Yeah, I'll do the Go Line.
All right.
Um, All-Aboard Flor, or Go Line at the MPO meeting. It seems that they forgot that we had talked about redoing the North County Hub. I know we've talked about it here. We had talked about it at the MPO, the last couple of meetings, and all of a sudden, it just got kind of rolled into, if nobody had been, if you blinked, it would have just gone right away. We have brought it back to their attention that we need to address the North County Hub, that there are issues there, many different ones, upcoming ones with new projects that are going in there, residence issues, safety issues. So bottom line, once it was brought back to the table, they are going to do a study to see if they can put it closer on the corner of 510, 512, perhaps, somewhere over in that area.
I think one of the things we can do, you run into multiple jurisdictions about who owns what, but I think if there was ultimately better lighting out along that street, as well as if they threw up a couple of cameras up there, it would reduce a lot, because it's not necessarily the people that are on the bus that are causing the problems. It's a lot of kids after school, they go up to the Burger King, and that's where some drugs transactions take place, fights take place, and then there's just some good kids who are just meeting up in that area. I don't know what it is, but a graveyard just seems to attract all of those kind of activities up there. But I think if whoever, lights would be a major improvement, as well as throwing up some, some cameras, and they could be attached to something, or just dummy cameras, and then we tell the youth, "We're watching you."
Yeah.
Well, couldn't we get FPL to, I mean, the, the property at Burger King and the, the gas station are city property, and wondering if we could get FPL to put lights in that area?
I just approved a light for, I was just talking to Frank about that, to see if it had gone up, because I haven't seen it in a couple of days, a light at Sebastian Crossings and 512. About the other lights...
Talking about not a stoplight, just a...
No, 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 a streetlight, a streetlight, to illuminate the area. The, we haven't talked about, because of this issue with Go Line and perhaps creating a new North County Hub, and they're talking about pool area, they're talking about a couple of different, they're, first of all, it's going to be a study. Frank was at, maybe Frank could just tell you about this, because he was at the meeting today, and...
You were there, too.
Yes. To help out the city manager, Frank, when I, when I was the city engineer at the MPO meeting this morning, there was discussion on the North County Transit Hub. The end result was that the board approved, actually supported approving the study of $10,000 to look at a new site. And that was supposed to identify the best location within that surrounding area for a new transit for future use.
Because that's also kind of in conjunction with, they're looking at the, making the 510 a four-lane road, so they're looking at all those kind of possibilities along the way.
And to add on, the city manager was correct. The study will look at not just the transit hub, but a transit hub, possible fire station at locations, maybe at the, at the water, at the pool, the county pool, or at Dryden, or maybe across the street where there's a vacant property which is owned by the county. So they're looking at all these possible locations for future larger transit and maybe fire station.
Right. And a lot is, I think, it's just that area, too. Even if the hub was moved, that's still an, an area where undesirable activity occurs and may want to look at lights and a camera in the future anyways.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of desolate back there, but for the buses that go...
And it runs that trail, too. You know, see, right behind, and you can go, do your little deal, and you go into the woods, and you do what you do in the woods, you know?
And, and so it's kind of like the prime place. If, if you're looking to get into some trouble, that's a good spot.
Right. So do you want to talk about All-Aboard Florida, too?
Um, I, I was monitoring the county's commission meetings, too, and I forgot to bring the exact amount. They had a, there is a paper, and I can give it to the city manager to pass down to all of us, I forgot to bring it this evening, on how much money we have spent on All-Aboard Florida as far as the legal fees. It says it's significant, a significant amount, and there still is some left. The report from Dylan today, Dylan Rengold, the county attorney, was very optimistic in that we had, had got some bang for our buck on this stop-the-train business. I'm quite skeptical yet, you know, I'd, I'll believe it when I see it, and it's not over till it's over. So I'm not passing judgment on, did we spend the money wisely or not? I'm just saying, we spent a lot of money on it. Maybe it worked, maybe not. We, we don't know for sure.
Still a long road to go.
Exactly.
Right. And then the one thing also we have that is on the list, for the streetlights at Joy Haven and Concha on Barber Street, they're listed as number four on the plan, but they, they don't go in order. Like I said, is, you know, they might be number four in the plan, but it's number one in our hearts to get that done. So hopefully that'll work. Any other committee reports? All right. We have no public hearings tonight. Unfinished business, award the paving contract to Preferred Materials, Inc., in the amount of $63,720 for the golf course storage building. Mr. Griffin? Yes, sir. We are nearing completion of that building out on airport property. The initial design called for putting millings around the perimeter of the property and also for the access road. We did an evaluation, we, Frank and myself, and with the construction traffic and things like that, we could see that there's going to be a problem here in the future with the millings just being there. A little bit of a drainage problem, but also mostly when equipment's turning, digging up the millings and things like that, there is extra money in that project. So we went out to bid to, to pave the entire area along with that access road. The bids came back at, what was the low, $63,000 and change, and we are recommending approval.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would move to authorize a award of paving contract to Preferred Materials, Inc., for $63,720, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract.
Second.
All right. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Any further council discussion? Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Mayor McPartlin.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes.
Ms. Coy.
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Brings us up to public input. Anyone from the public wish to speak on something not already on the agenda? Yes, sir. Good evening.
Just a quick comment. I know it's spoken before. Would waste management, when they're picking up our material on wrap or recycle, I followed a truck coming down Barber Street, and the debris, the papers, were coming out of the top of it. You might want to have them see if there's a gate they close when they're on the roadway? Thank you. That's not what I came for.
Okay.
Tomorrow, you've got the planning department meeting on a police evidence building. And I have here a city council agenda transmittal dated February 24th, authorizing the city manager to go into, look into a architect to do the planning, et cetera. The company was, I have a work authorization, that was dated February 24th. I have a City of Sebastian work order form, which is dated January 18th. I think it says a little before you gave authorization to do it, full document of it, what has to be done, what should be done. And it states, we will, that they will provide a survey and engineering service for the design and permitting of a proposed 20-by-30 police evidence storage building at 600 square feet. In the paper, we advertised that they're going to be holding a meeting, and my eyes are bad, but make it short, it was August 31st, for a 3,000-square-foot building. So I didn't have enough time today, but my computer's about the slowest thing in the world. I looked up the paperwork that's going to be at the meeting tomorrow. There's full documentation of a 30-by-100 building, looks like garage doors on it, parking area, all changing in the back here, with a $3,000 proposed budget. And that's what you authorized, 300, I'm sorry, $300,000 budget. But a 20-by-30 building is the size of a house. You've just taken it to 3,000 square foot. When did the city approve the authorization to go from a 20-by-30 building to a 30-by-100? Did it ever come before the board? It's also being done by the city. Why are we going through planning? We have a building department that knows every spec inside out and upside down. Just a comment. The dates don't jive. I hope all of you can go to the meeting tomorrow night and see the presentation, or you probably have a packet for it, or you could get it. But it's about a quarter-inch-thick packet showing the surveys, the location, the shrubbery. I'm not sure about anything done further in the back on the other property, where they were talking about tennis and pickleball and other things. I don't know if that got put in there. I didn't, my computer failed me.
Right.
But going from a 20-by-30 building to a 30-by-100, maybe we should take the art club, the senior center, and the quilters, and put them in a building that size, and use those two buildings for the impound area. What are we impounding? Track the trailers? 30 by 100? Track the trailers, 30 by 100? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Griffin, you have any, any information on this, this possible debacle?
Actually, the dates do jive, contrary to what Mr. Hocker says. The signed, uh, work authorization came in from the vendor before it went to council. No work started until council approved that. I can guarantee that. Uh, the other thing is, um, I'm not gonna go into a description of what our, uh, police evidence building is right now, just for security reasons, but I think Mr. Gilmore knows, been out to the airport a number of times, we need a new police evidence building. Uh, once we got into the design of this and consultation with the chief, we decided we needed at least a 30 by 100 building. Um, I'm not gonna tell you and make public what I've seen in that building from time to time, but I think I have assurances from Frank, the police chief, and others that we would not put something up, um, that would be an assault on taxpayer money if we did not need it. So this is going to be heard at P&amp;Z tomorrow night, Frank is going to be making that presentation. Anything that comes out of P&amp;Z with our, and our current budget, by the way, right now is around 260, $260,000. Anything that comes out of P&amp;Z is going to be coming to council for your approval and with a construction contract after we bid that. So we have a ways to go here and, uh, there's gonna be a, a lot of public vetting of this issue, uh, even before it gets to council. So I think we're doing the right thing, we're on track. By the way, part of this project is to develop that parking area over there. Uh, the chief and the police department, they are in dire need of more parking and we need to make that secure, that adds to the expense. So, uh, I think we're on track and I think we're doing the right thing.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Griffin. On the other matter about the waste management, I think in the future, if you see a truck and it is losing, you call the city hotline, 581-0111, and I'm sure the city will notify Bob De La Cruz, cause I'm sure waste management doesn't want any litter coming out of the truck, and it could be a malfunctioning part that they're not familiar with, but unless somebody says something, we don't know. So, anyone else from the public wish to speak? All right. Brings us up to new business, item 12A, review draft revised purchasing manual. Mr. Griffin?
Yes, sir. Um, kinda the first assignment that I laid on Mr. Romanek, our new, uh, contracts administrator and purchasing, uh, manager, is to revise our purchasing manual. He's come up with, uh, some revisions here, um, I'm putting this out to, to council, um, for your review. Uh, it's in draft form, obviously. Uh, there is a summary at the end of the, of the document that I put in there, which would be the major changes, uh, procurement of goods and services, different levels. One of the biggest things, uh, full disclosure, is that from time to time, we run into, and this, this document hasn't been changed since, um, 2000, the last change, 96, and then-
2002.
2002, yeah. So, one of the things where we run into problems is the limits on, um, the city manager's authority for spending. Uh, currently, we have to come before council, unless it's an emergency, of course, uh, for anything over $15,000. That has caused some problems from time to time because of, uh, different projects that, and different things always come up, different projects that we have to get done. Uh, I am asking that that be increased to $25,000. So that's one of the biggest, uh, the biggest issues there. The other thing, if you just review those levels, now that we have a, a purchasing manager onboard with another set of eyes to help the city manager, um, he's been given some authority to take a look at these things and approve these things as we go forward. So those are the big changes. This document is in draft form and, um, I'm open for any suggestions.
Well, I liked it, seemed like he tried to consolidate a bunch of different things under, under one house, you know? I guess the only one thing, you know, the question I have, and it may not belong in there, like say a contract, if they don't fulfill their obligation and we're looking to assess damages, and I know this came up when we were talking about, uh, the irrigation system out the airport, they're like, oh, they're a day late, we're only gonna fine them $150. It's like, it's a million dollar project, it should hurt a little bit. I don't know if that kinda penalty should be in there, or you're just leaving it, cause I know each contract is different, it's up to the city manager's discretion how to put that. So I don't know if that item needs to be in there or somewhere else, I mean, whatever you think is best.
Maybe I should address that, because I know Mr. Gilmore in the past has had a, had an issue with this. There, there's really two schools of thought on this, uh, and it's all about liquidated damages. You're right, you have a million dollar contract, so do you, do you have $300 a day or $100 a day for liquidated damages? And a lot of people would think that that would be, uh, absurd. What happens in the bidding process, I think, is that if you put in a high liquidated damage number, $500,000 a day, whatever it is, the contractor is, because everything, something always happens at the end of a, of a construction contract or another contract, something always happens, the bidder is going to have to program that into his bid. So we are going to get an artificially high number from the contract. I think it's my job to get the, the lowest possible bid and the best value. Uh, so I go to the other extreme, I think, and say there should be a low liquidated damage. Uh, there's still gonna be a penalty, and I understand the variance in, in price and things like that, there's still gonna be a penalty, but I want the lowest price from the, from the contractor at the beginning of the contract. Um, that's kinda been my philosophy, I think it's served us well, there's been some issues. As a matter of fact, uh, the, the previous item we just had on the golf course storage building, Kearns Construction is now in liquidated damages since, uh, August 15th. Uh, there's been some issues there with some product approvals, they're working on it and, um, I heard today that that's, that's going to be accelerated and they're gonna be finishing up. But I tend to be fairly rigid when we hit liquidated damages and I make them stick, I think, even though they might be low. So my philosophy is to get the lowest possible price, the best value for the city, and rather than a huge punishment thing, um, on the backside. I don't know if that makes sense, but-
Mr. Mayor, may I, Mike?
Yes.
You, you said, uh, Mr. Griffin, we're in liquidated damages phase with Kearns now. Does that mean we're actually gonna collect some money from them, or it's gonna come off of what we pay them? Is that what that means?
It's gonna come off what we pay them, yes, sir.
Okay. Because it didn't come off what we paid them for the, for the month that they were delinquent in rehabbing two, uh, restrooms on the golf course, did it?
I think that there was, um, they were given some extensions because of weather. Like, the contract period was, uh, December, January, and probably part of February, and that's when we had 10 inches of rain a month then. So they were given extensions.
If they're, if they provide- That was your, that was your purview to do that?
Well, if they provide documentation, uh, I have to consider that, yes, sir.
Well, you know, I don't think it takes, when we rode the golf course together, you said, "Don't worry, they're gonna get this done on time because we got liquidated damages in this contract of $100 a day." You promised me that back in August before they ever got the contract.
Well, Mr. Gilmore, there's something I can't control and that's the weather.
I mean, that's the thing I recall too, is excessive rain and when you're doing concrete work and stucco work out there, you know what, you could put it on, but it's just gonna-
Mr. Mayor, would you, would you-
Run right down the thing. That's all I'm saying is, you're looking at extenuating circumstance, you give the liquidated damages, but when you're looking, there's an act of God, we had an exorbitant amount of rain, how can you fault somebody for that? And then you're looking at what the damages are, the people were inconvenienced by not being able to use the bathroom on the golf course-
Well, they didn't start for a month before the contract, I mean, they, if they'd started on time, they would've been done on time.
I, with a question I have for you, do you think you should put the damages in this manual, or it doesn't belong in there and we'll just leave that up to you?
Well, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, if, if I could, those contracts, all of those contracts come before us, uh, so those, those liquidated damages and all of those things are listed in a contract, uh, that we would have to make the approval on. Uh, so I think that it would probably be most appropriate to wait and, and do those at the contractual, that the time the contract is let.
Okay, that's fine. I just, I, I really appreciate all the time and effort Mr. Romanek put in there and he can solidate a lot of things, so, you know, I leave it up to you. Any, any other questions for Mr. Griffin or Mr. Romanek? Everybody happy with it? Get a motion?
I'm going to approve. We have revised the decision.
Second, anyone from the public wish to speak about this revision on this manual? Any further discussion? Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes.
Ms. Coy.
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mayor McPartlin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Brings up the 12B, award the right-of-way swale ditch mowing services contract to Ace Landscaping and Pest Management in the amount of $299,956. Mr. Griffin?
Uh, the current, uh, ditch mowing, right-of-way mowing contract expires the end of this month. Uh, we went out to a public bid and received two bids and the low bid was from Ace Landscaping, Pest Management, $299, $299,000 and change, and we are recommending approval.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to authorize the city manager to go into a service agreement contract with Ace Landscaping and Pest Management in the amount of $299,956.
All right. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this contract? All right. This their first time doing this for us?
Yes, it is. Uh, we've had Mr. Conlon for about three years now and, uh, he decided not to bid on this contract, and this is the first time Ace has, uh, uh, bid on a contract here. We did check the references, by the way, and they all came out very good.
Okay. Cause we had the problem a few years ago, so-
Yes, sir.
All right. But they look good?
Can we just emphasize to them about securing permission to traipse through private property to access these ditches and swales?
That, uh, that was, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry to interrupt, that was covered in the pre-bid.
Okay.
All right. Any other discussion, questions? Uh, we have a motion, a second roll call, Ms. Williams.
Ms. Coy.
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mayor McPartlin.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, brings up, Mr. Ginsburg, you have anything for us tonight?
Just a note, um, on the purchasing manual that you took a look at a few minutes ago, that will come back to you in the form of an ordinance, and so you'll get another look.
All right.
Uh, other than that, um, nothing tonight, sir, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Griffin?
Yes, uh, yes, sir, I have, uh, three things. Um, you see in your packet on page 283 of 285, a letter from Waste Management, they are, um, have declared because of CPI adjustment, uh, a rate increase, and I didn't know there was gonna be math involved with this, so I did, uh, email every, emailed Dina who was here earlier and forwarded that to members of council about what the rate increase would be for residential service, and it was nine cents per month. So I wanted to give, uh, council and the public notice of that.
I don't know.
Uh, number two for me is, um, let's not forget, on Monday, the 19th of September at 6:00 PM, we have our first budget hearing. And as, and my third item, as part of that, we are going to have in front of council the PEA and PBA contracts that have recently been ratified by the rank and file, both, both the hourly employees for the city and also from the police department. This process has taken about nine and a half months, we started it in early January by forming a working group, myself, Ken RC, uh, Ken Kilgore, our CFO, Cynthia Watson, Jennifer Smith from Finance, uh, we brought in Nancy Veat as a consultant and also the chief, uh, for PBA items. That took about seven, a little over seven months, line by line, paragraph by paragraph. And then Ken and Cynthia really did the, the heavy lifting with the negotiations, so they deserve a lot of credit that we now have these, a ratification of these two contracts and that'll be coming before you on Monday night. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Griffin. Ms. Williams?
Yes, um, on a previous agenda, the ordinance for the police pension board was announced that the public hearing would be tonight, but the police pension board needs to look at the ordinance first before it comes back to you, so you will see it September 28th. Did I confuse you?
All right, thank you, is that it?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Leads us up to council matters. I guess I'm off the, you know, starting it off, and I guess one of the things I wanted to discuss is attendance issues that have been happening over the last several months concerning up here on the council. I think it's up to this board to kinda police themselves concerning attendance. It was a couple of months ago that Mr. Griffin sent an email to the citizens, uh, board that looks over the budget review committee about their attendance. You know, when we're up here, all I can do is, I can only be responsible for myself. And my expectation is to show up at every meeting and every workshop that's there. I understand there are work commitments, there are family commitments, people get sick. But I think if you know you're gonna be a planned vacation or a work assignment and you're not gonna make it, you need to make the city manager aware of that as far in advance as you possibly can, not the day of the meeting. We conduct a lot of business here, the last several months, you know, there's been a couple of meetings where we only had three people that were up here. And you know, some people that we had variance boards and they, you have individuals and companies that pay a lot of money for us to be up here, and it takes three eyes to move every, anything forward. And by not having a full board, that does a disservice to them. As well as we had the charter review committee that met for about six months reviewing the whole charter, and they had made two recommendations for this council to move forward, forward with items they felt strongly enough belonged on the ballot. Because we weren't able to have a full body and that, the, the second item may not have even passed, but I think they were entitled to a full board sitting up here giving it an up or a down vote. I wasn't gonna mention any of these things until the, the elect, the first meeting after the November election, but I think it's important that we keep in mind about attendance, and I'm proposing that going forward, no more than two excused absences per year. And I think it's the council that decides what's an excused or an unexcused absence. It's not up to Ms. Williams to do that. It's not up to Mr. Griffin or Mr. Ginsburg, it's up to us to police ourselves. And I think two excused absences per year is reasonable. Anything more than that, I feel requires a doctor's note, or it could be if there was a death in the family, some notice similar to that. I think going forward, if, if you have more than, you know, unexcused absences, I, I think you should probably lose some pay. We gave an attendance proclamation earlier today and they were talking about 10% attendance. If you miss two meetings a year, that's basically 10%. We wouldn't hire an employee with that kinda show-up rate. So those are some of my recommendations, as well as I would like to see an attendance log in the agenda. I serve in several boards throughout the community and they put in there whether you were an excused absence or an unexcused absence. And I think because, you know, one of the reasons is, it's not like we got chosen to be up here. We, we decided that we were gonna run for office and we were elected up by the people to come up here and represent. And being present is part of the word represent. And I think the log in there shows transparency to the rest of the citizens about who is representing them up there. You know, I got a couple other things I wanna, you know, I would like to see is, you know, one of the ones I think about is be prepared for every meeting. Read your agenda, speak with the charter officers, ask those questions before you come to council. So the meeting flows more- to council, so the meeting flows more easily. As well as if you do miss a meeting, I request that you review the tape of the meeting to see what happened during that time, or again, if you have a planned absence, again, is to speak with Mr. Griffin. I know Ms. Coy, I know every time she's going on vacation, and we all on this board know two months ahead of time that she's gonna be gone, and she requests certain items not to be on the next agenda. So, anybody have any problems with an attendance log, or, or two excused absences per year, or they wanna up it, I would like some input on that.
I like that, I, I think you have an excellent idea, do we, how do we agree to that? Is it in the form of a resolution?
I would suggest that we read the charter, because the charter has provisions in it that outline exactly what we're supposed to do.
Right, well, the charter talks about three unexcused absences.
Charter states clearly, three unexcused absences in a row, then council can take action, and I would say, Mr. McPartlin, that I agree with absolutely everything you've said, and I'm sure you're not accusing anyone up here of just willy-nilly missing meetings, because I don't think any single person up here would. Um, so I would agree with you, that if it's absolutely, that, that every council member should be here unless it's absolutely impossible for them to get here, I think they should be here. And, so I would agree with you, but I would also suggest that maybe you take a little time to read the charter, and that you acquaint yourself with it, because it actually outlines the process by which you, you're talking.
Right, and what does it say about who gives an excused or an unexcused absence?
That would be up to the council. Every single time, every single time the, uh, the city clerk announces that so-and-so has asked for an excused absence, the council approves that or disapproves that.
And that's why I'm requesting the attendance log being in there, and if you had received two excused absences during the year, then to me, that would be an unexcused absence unless you had a doctor's note or other approved documentation.
I think that the charter does a pretty good job with, with the outlining, because I think it really lends itself to, uh, to saying that if you have someone who is, who's clearly, uh, clearly not doing their job and clearly not coming to meetings, then you have recourse, but if you have someone that maybe gets sick, uh, and, and so someone takes ill, and they're out for a few months, then, then the, the council has the opportunity to, to approve or disapprove of whether or not they're excused or not. Um, I'm, I agree with you 100% that, that we should look at every absence and, and decide whether or not we should excuse that absence, and we should do that on every absence.
How do we do that?
I think that's what the attendance log in the thing would do, and I think-
How do I know unless, unless you, uh, the mayor says, you know, "I'm, I'm taking my family to Puerto Vallarta, and I won't be here for the next meeting." How do we know? Because most excused absences here, um-
Let's, they're never questioned.
They're, it's not questioned.
Right.
And, and, and to my knowledge, you know, it's the rationale, I know what I do, and I, again, I like you, I can only speak for myself, I know when, when I've been sick, I've been, okay, I'll go to the meeting, um, or when I'm on vacation, I know that normally way ahead of time, and, and so I know what I do, but I can't speak for anyone else, and, and so I don't know, you know, if it's, if it's work-related, or if, 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 if someone's being excused because they're ill, or a family member died, or, I don't know.
I understand, I understand that, and I do the same thing, Ms. Coy, if I'm gonna be absent, and, and let's, let's be clear, this isn't like a big problem. This is, this council generally is here in a five count almost every single time. There are a few instances where we're not, so this isn't a big problem, but if we wanna make it that, we can have the discussion. Every single time I'm absent, which is very rare, I contact the city manager prior, uh, well in advance. If there's any way I can possibly get here, I get here. In fact, if, if I'm in Naples, Florida, and I'm working, and there's an item on the agenda that is, that, that I believe me being here is going to, to make a difference, I drive here, I vote, I spend my time at the meeting, and then I drive back to Naples for the next day. It's as simple as that. If, if I cannot make it, I contact the city manager and let him know, and I contact the city clerk and let her know well in advance, um, and I believe that every single council member up here would do the same, and I certainly wouldn't accuse any of them of, of just not taking this seriously and, and not understanding the role and responsibilities they have to make sure they're here. Um, I think all five of us do that, um, and I'm very pleased with the way things are. The charter clearly spells out that if, if this council wants to, to, to make an unexcused absence with three votes or a vote of the majority has the right to do that, so I'm pretty happy with the way things are.
What would you say a good number of excused absences is?
Well, a good number of excused absences would be as many absences that are necessary where a council member cannot make it here. At that point, the citizens have a right to decide whether or not that council member is working hard enough for them.
Okay, all right.
And, and you can have a personal number in your head, I personally think that two is a, is a, is a, is a good number, so that you can, you can, at any moment, when anyone brings up, uh, an absence or requests an excused absence, you, as a council member, can, can say, "No, that will not be excused." You have that right as a council member.
That's why I'm requesting an attendance log in the agenda to help assist with that, because I don't think, until I saw it, is a considerable amount of absences in the last six months. Didn't have this problem my first four and a half years sitting on the council, and it really took me aback, and, you know, I received several emails from several members of the Charter Review Committee, as well as people in the public, and they're thinking about it, and it's a thing that I have brought up with Mr. Griffin over the past several months, so when you're talking, this body's been five, it hasn't been five, this is the first time it's been five in, phew, in a while.
Well, it's a good thing we all believe up here that we have a job to do, and we do our damnedest to get here.
Okay.
Personally, I would feel a lot better and more com, a lot more comfortable, yes, I would like to see the, an attendance roster being published, I, I think that's a good idea. Uh, if you're absent, you're absent, um, but it would make me feel better that, you know, Councilmember Coy is absent because of, uh, it's her annual Holland America cruise, you know, it's, she's, she's gone on vacation. I don't mind, I don't mind the city clerk or the city manager stating that publicly, that I've called in ahead of time, um, or, uh, Councilmember Coy is, is, uh, very, very ill, and she's remaining home and hope she gets better, you know, hey, that's an excuse, but to say, "Has requested an excused absence," over time, it's every, you know, that's what we get, so-and-so has requested an excused absence, has requested an excused absence, and we've never said, "Well, what's wrong?" You know, where are they?
You have a right to do that, I think, I, I absolutely believe it.
Do, do, okay, and that would make me feel a lot better if, 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 if we would just include the "why we're being excused," you know, if it's work-related, it's work-related, that's fine.
I have an issue with that, because, I mean, if it's a medical, you know, do you really want somebody to know that you're suffering from hemorrhoids, you know, "My hemorrhoids are gonna keep me from coming to the," or other things, and everything that we do is public.
Well, I don't, I don't know that I need to know that it's, it's pneumococcal pneumonia or hemorrhoids, or, but, you know, ill, it would suffice.
Well, but, again, everything that is put out from the clerk's office is public record, um, I, I have no problem with her communicating to any of us, but if, if it's done in a public manner, um, you know, if, if, if you have a death in the family or other issues, you don't necessarily want that published publicly, I, you know?
I went to a funeral in New York, I had no problem in asking for an excused absence to, to attend my stepbrother's funeral.
Well-
I, I mean, that to me is an excused absence.
And it's an exaggeration of the actual facts here, I mean, it's, that's, that's what's taking place, there's an exaggeration of the actual facts. You know, when you have a few meetings, the fact of the matter is, we have two meetings a month, so that's only 12 a year, so if something happens to you a couple of times, maybe three times, in a year, then it seems like you've missed an awful lot of meetings, and, and you quite frankly may have, but I believe this is an exaggeration. Uh, I'm comfortable with the way things are, I believe that, you know, if you're, if you, if you feel uncomfortable at any time with giving a, an excuse, absence, then you have a right as a council member to simply say, "I, I feel that Mr. Hill has missed too many meetings," or "I feel that, that, that Ms. Coy has missed two meetings," or "I don't think that she deserves to go on that vacation this year because I can't go on one, so I'm gonna give her an unexcused absence." I mean, we're all pretty, pretty mature adults up here, doing the job of the people of this community, working very hard for the people of this community without compensation, essentially, um, and, and I do it gladly, because I love this community, and I have been doing this, as you all know, since 2000, essentially, uh, so I think that, you know, a statement about, a statement from the mayor, something like, "Hey, maybe we should tighten up a little bit, uh, I've been a little concerned," would be reasonable, but I think that the, the exaggeration is, is really not something that should be-
Well, I would, I hate to say it's an exaggeration, you know, tonight is the 19th council meeting since the election, okay? Somebody at 18 missed five council meetings, is five out of 18 too many? Or that's, is that fine? You know, somebody, is five excused absences out of 18 acceptable? To me personally, that's not acceptable.
And you have a right to, to say that you don't-
Okay, that's why I'm saying the attendance log, until I saw the attendance log, I didn't realize it over the course of the year. That's what I'm saying.
And if you include in that, we, we have totally ignored the fact that all of us are required to sit on certain committees. If you add non-attendance to that, oh my lord, are we, there's some committees that have not been attended at all. And, and so if you look at the whole picture, I think there is cause for concern, and if you can't make these meetings, I don't know. I, I tend to agree with the mayor, I don't wanna over-exaggerate, because I- Mr. Hill, I do agree with you, that we are conscientious, we're adults, but it really was, it hurt my heart that the Charter Review Committee worked that hard, and two times in a row, we had only three people, and we couldn't address their issue, and there was no time to call for a special meeting. We just told the Charter Review Committee that, eh, well, twice in a row, and that's to me, that, that made a statement to me, is we've gotta do a better job, and there, I don't, I don't see any excuse for that having happened, other than we were remiss, and we owe it to the public not to do that. So, I don't know, I, I don't have a suggestion, I like, I like the attendance thing, let's put it, let's make it part of the packet, so that you can see a running list, let's publish it. I don't care if we put an excuse down or not, A stands for absent.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So, my turn to address the, the attendance issue, because I am one of the culprits who missed two meetings in a row. Uh, not to, you know, defend myself or anything, but I feel it, I owe it to the public if they're, to explain my absence. Like you said, you know, things happen, but like I'm saying, life happens. I missed a meeting because I was sick. I missed the second meeting because, most people don't know, but I'm back in school getting out a degree. My finals was the same day as the meeting, had no choice. So, it's not that, uh, I was remiss or was neglecting my duty, I take my, my obligation here on the city council very, very seriously, as I think we all do. But again, I can only say, life happens, it may not have happened in the past, things change, sometimes you have no control over it. Nobody's intentionally going to just not show up for a meeting just because, "Oh, well, I don't feel like coming today." We all are here for a reason, we know why we're here, we took it upon ourselves to be here, nobody's just going to brush it off as an inconvenience. That's all I have to say.
All right, my idea wasn't to point any fingers, it's just something that came about, and it was pretty glaring that was there, and again, it's not up to the clerk to give an excused or an unexcused absence, and I know what the charter says, it's up to this body to decide if it's an excused or an unexcused absence going forward, so that's all I have on that. Mr. Gilmore?
Uh, I have nothing tonight.
Mr. Adams?
Nothing tonight.
Ms. Coy?
Um, yes, thank you. Very quickly, um, I wanna say a special thank you to everyone who came to the 9/11 ceremony on Sunday, uh, and thanks to, uh, all the city folks who came on, on Sunday. Boy, was it hot, Sunday at 1:00 down there, and oh, by the way, I am sunburned, it was hot, hot, hot. So, thank you to everybody, and a real special thank you, um, I'm bringing this up because in light of especially a mosque that was just torched south of us, there's a lot of animosity and hate speech and a whole bunch of that going around, this, tis the season, and, and I'm not trying to tell people what they can say or can't say, but I wanna just say that I am publicly very proud of the citizens of Sebastian. There was a gentleman at the 9/11 ceremony handing out flyers that were very, very hateful, had speech on it that, um, I certainly didn't appreciate, and, uh, I, I, once I started reading the flyer, I, I crumbled it up, and I walked back, chased him down, and I threw it back at him and told him I didn't want his, well, on TV I'll say "stuff." And as I looked at in the audience, he eventually left, I, he got the message, that we weren't interested, we were there to honor the 9/11, uh, that was a ceremony, to honor folks, not, not to hate people. And I looked in the garbage, and, you look out in the audience, and people were not reading this crap, the crap was in the garbage pail, where it belonged, so I'm really proud of the citizens of Sebastian's for understanding that there's no room for that, and we don't need to do that here, so thank you, Sebastian, you really met my expectations, you exceeded my expectations once again. And, oh, by the way, Thursday, September 22nd, 4:00, we can wave our flags on US1, the guy riding a bike, don't forget, see you there, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hill?
Nothing further, thank you.
All right, being no further business, this meeting's adjourned, goodnight.